I would like to reconvene the meeting and call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of July 18th, 2017. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. City Attorney Trejillo, could you please give the report on closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council have a closed session to discuss five items. Under item number one, public employee discipline dismissal and release, there is no reportable action. Under item number two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, there is the following report. Direction to intervene in pending litigation was given pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1. Information concerning the action, the defendants, and other particulars shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. In regards to item number three, existing litigation, there is no reportable action. In regards to item number four, conference with legal counsel, liability claims, there is no reportable action. And finally, under item number five, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, there is no reportable action. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trejillo. First item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is to the
and parks. Whereas recreation and parks programs and facilities are an integral part of life in the city of Santa Maria, and whereas city recreation programs and parks are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in Santa Maria and ensuring the health and well-being of all citizens, and whereas recreation and parks programs build healthy, active communities with aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas recreation and parks increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, and crime reduction, and whereas recreation and parks focuses on ensuring youth and teens remain safe and strong all summer long, and whereas recreation and parks are fundamental to the environmental well-being of the community by protecting groundwater, preventing flooding, improving air quality, providing vegetative buffers to development, and offering habitat for wildlife, and whereas the city parks ensure the ecological beauty of the community and provide a place for families to connect with nature and outdoor recreation. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognized July 1 through July 31st as Recreation and Parks Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage residents and businesses to partake in recreation and parks activities and enjoy the array of opportunities within the city's parks, facilities, and recreation program. And here to accept the proclamation is Recreation and Parks Commissioner Rebecca Carey, and
Hello, my name is Alana Robb. On behalf of the Recreation and Parks Department, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, and City Council members, for this proclamation. I am currently an intern for the Recreation and Parks Department and was previously a rec leader. I recently received my bachelor's degree in Recreation Administration with an emphasis in community and youth services from Fresno State. I came back to Santa Maria to contribute to the community where I was born and raised. Thank you again for recognizing the Recreation and Parks Department and supporting the many programs, services, and activities that we offer to the community.
Hello, my name is Patrick Sims, and I wanted to thank the Madam Mayor and the City Council for this proclamation for the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department. I am a recent college graduate from Temple University's Sports and Recreation Management Degree. I was also previously an intern for the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department. I am currently the Police Activity League Coordinator, where I am in charge of the Powell Key Club and the Junior Giants Youth Baseball Program. The Junior Giants is a free, non-competitive baseball program for youth between the ages of five and 13. Currently, we have around 180 underserved youth participating in this year's program. If it wasn't for the City of Santa Maria Recreation and Parks Department, programs like the Junior Giants and other programs that are geared towards underserved youth would not be able to happen. So I just wanted to thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you. The next order of business this evening is the introduction of our next series of Hometown Hero Honorees, and I'll be making the presentation along with Recreation and
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are happy to be here and introduce to you the new class of Hometown Heroes. As you know, the Hometown Heroes Program started last year, and we began recognizing individuals who served in the military, who were either from Santa Maria or lived their most of their lives in Santa Maria, and served in one of the branches of the service. We've had, I believe it's two classes up so far, so this will be our third class. Dennis Smitherman, our management analyst, has been working with the community groups to organize the individuals that you're going to be recognizing tonight. And we've also been working with the VFW and with the American Legion to present these awards. So I'm going to ask first if there are members of the American Legion or VFW that are here to represent those organizations, if they can come up to the rail. Very good. And Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind joining us down at the rail, Dennis has the information here to distribute, and we will proceed by introducing this year's recipients. You can come on inside, and you can meet with Dennis there. Thank you. So this year, we're proud to recognize the following individuals. If they or their family representatives are here, if they would please come up and receive their certificates. The first certificate I have listed here is for Alicia Cantua, with the U.S. Air Force. Is there someone here representing Alicia, or is Alicia here? Next, we would like to recognize Don Fillmore, U.S. Navy.[496.02][496.02](APPLAUSE) Next, we would like to recognize Gerardo M. Chavez, U.S. Army.[511.46][511.46](APPLAUSE) And we would like to recognize Harvey E. Lobo, U.S. Navy.[523.41][523.41](APPLAUSE) Next, we would like to recognize Mr. John Allen, U.S. Army.[535.29][535.29](APPLAUSE) And next, we would like to recognize Pete S. Salazar, U.S. Army. I'm sorry, I apologize. John Alvarado, U.S. Army.[557.04][557.04](APPLAUSE) And Pete S. Salazar, U.S. Army.[567.04][567.04](APPLAUSE) We would like to recognize Richard E. Simpson, U.S. Army.[579.04][579.04](APPLAUSE) Next, we would like to recognize Van Diaz, U.S. Navy.[590.41][590.41](APPLAUSE) And next, we'd like to recognize William G. Worth, U.S. Navy.[601.82][601.82](APPLAUSE) And finally, and next, we'd like to recognize Glenn Prescott, United States Air Force.[619.16][619.16](APPLAUSE) We'd like to thank those individuals and families who have sponsored this class of Hometown Heroes. These banners will be being installed along Bradley, and let's see, between Benaravia Road and McCoy. The new banners that will be going up in the next couple of weeks will be switching out from the class that's up now to this new group of individuals. I had the opportunity to have a little bit of a conversation with a couple of families, and if you'll notice in the photo from Mr. Pete Salazar, Mr. Salazar is a Bronze Star, Silver Star, and Three Purple Heart, World War II veteran, who was a longtime resident of Santa Maria and passed away. But again, an outstanding example of the heroes that we have in Santa Maria. So Councilmembers, thank you very much for the opportunity to present these awards and recognition to these vets.[691.73][691.73](APPLAUSE)
And on behalf of the City of Santa Maria also, I'd like to congratulate all the veterans who have served and the recognition, and are there any comments from the council?
I just would like to say that ever since this program has started, it has, we have been able to acknowledge our veterans within the City of Santa Maria, and those that are alive and those that have passed on, and I think this is absolutely wonderful, and we can never say enough to the veterans who have fought for our freedoms, because we know that freedom is not free, and there's a big price to pay. So this is a little thank you, and we just appreciate you more than you'll ever know. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you. A question to Alex. Is Pete anything to Frank?
That's Frank's brother, yes.
Frank's brother.
Okay. The other gentleman I'd like to mention is William Worth. I know him from the Alx Lodge, and he is a part of the ever-decreasing group of World War II veterans also, and he still volunteers his time down there several times a week, and he's 90-something years old, and great guy.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Posada. The next item this evening is a commendation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Police Corporal Louis Tenore has been employed by and has faithfully served the City of Santa Maria since February 24th, 1992, and whereas Corporal Louis Tenore's service has been of distinction and of the highest quality, and whereas Corporal Louis Tenore has been committed to the philosophy of community-based policing, the ethics of treating all persons with dignity and respect, and whereas Corporal Louis Tenore has provided the residents and businesses in the community with extraordinary professional law enforcement service, the great compassion, and whereas Corporal Louis Tenore, through his dedication, loyalty, devotion, and duty, has contributed measurably to the quality of life that the residents and businesses and visitors have enjoyed here in Santa Maria. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council and the City of Santa Maria as follows. Corporal Louis Tenore is commended for his faithful, distinguished, and devoted service to the community. He is congratulated on his retirement, and the city wishes him and his family continued health and happiness. Passed and adopted at the regular meeting here in the City of Santa Maria on July 18th, 2017.
I'll accept that as a motion, and I'll second that.
Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
You know, before we call Louis up here to accept this, it's a great honor for me to give this. I was personally involved in hiring of most of the older officers back here, none of the ones that still look like they're in high school.[905.81][905.81](LAUGHTER) And to have this happen where you kind of cap it off in the end and present them like this resolution is just kind of like my full serve. So it's a great honor.
I just want to thank the city. It's been over 25 years, the city's had a lot of the ups and downs, and we all got together and we all, we got through it. So it's nice to see the city in a great place right now and moving forward, and it's been my privilege to work with all of you. Thank you.
Louis, Louis, Louis. I should apologize for wearing my dark glasses here, I'm not under the influence.[981.56][981.56](LAUGHTER) I'm old, and I've lost my clear glasses, and I have to keep these because they're prescription, and I can't read without them, so I apologize to all of you.
And Chief Hanson, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, I'd love to. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Louis is a wonderful officer, and he's one of those rare breed that 25 years, he was still pushing that radio car, still chasing down bad guys, still serving the people of this city on a daily basis to his utmost. And he was one of the people that, as a veteran officer, welcomed Chief Martin and welcomed me when I came onboard here a few years ago, and he's a go-to, he was a go-to person for us. And he has what a friend of mine used to call "the heart to serve." Louis did 25 years here in Santa Maria as a police officer, but he also did three years in Pismo before that, and he also served his country as a member of the United States Marine Corps before that. So he will have my undying respect and friendship, and Louis, thank you very much, and his wife Marissa's trying to hide the shadows back there, but she's one of our wonderful DA investigators and former member of the department as well. So thank you so much, both of you, for everything you've given.[1059.01][1059.01](APPLAUSE)
The next item is the introduction of the city's new Chief of Police. Mr. Hayden, would you like to do the honors?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, I have the distinct privilege of introducing our new Chief of Police for the City of Santa Maria, Mr. Phil Hanson. Chief Hanson has been with the city since 2013, having been hired by then-Chief Ralph Martin to be part of his command staff. He, along with former Commander Don Rodriguez, systematically changed our department and instituted best management practices throughout the operation, turning our department into what I would consider the premier law enforcement agency on the Central Coast. Chief Hanson has over 40 years of law enforcement experience, having served with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department for 36 years prior to his arrival in Santa Maria. He has served on many, many, several committees, in course development committees for post, as well as being a past chairman of the National Tactical Officers Association. And when I say chairman, that's for the National Tactical Police Officers Association. He holds his bachelor's degree in Business Administration from the University of California at Northridge, master's degree in Leadership from the University of Southern California. Couple weeks ago, I was asked what were some of the qualities that I was looking for in the next Chief of Police, and after giving it some consideration, I went back and I took a look at the desired leadership skills, qualities, and attributes that we collectively put together back in 2012 when we were looking for a chief. And we put together a stakeholders group, a focus group of community members and key business leaders, and identified what we thought would be the ideal police chief. After reviewing this list of attributes, and after personally working with Phil for the last several years, I came to the quick conclusion that we had our chief within the department, and there was no need to go outside the department. When I read these descriptors to you, if you would bear with me, this dates back about five years, but when I look at what we needed five years ago, and what I look at as to what we still need to continue in the direction that we're heading with the department, I think Phil is the right person for the right time to have a smooth transition within the Strong command presence, yet approachable, leads by example, check. Excellent communication skills, firm, yet diplomatic, check. Ability to build relationships and collaborate with others, both inside the department and outside, check. Open-minded and accessible, even with those that have opposing views, check. Has the ability to deal with gang-related issues, and has personally worked on gang enforcement activities. That's a big check. The largest operation that we had in the history of the City of Santa Maria was Operation Matador, and that was led by Chief Hanson. Believes in community-based policing, check. Experienced in working in culturally diverse communities, check. Ability to reach out to those disenfranchised groups and build trust, check. He's very respectful, has integrity, is proactive, and results-oriented, and that's another check. So when I take a look at these leadership skills, qualities, and abilities, it fits Phil Hanson to a T. So at this time, we'd like to call up Phil. A personal note, on our website, we already have Phil's bio on the website. He's been married for 42 years to his lovely wife Debbie, who's here this evening. They have two adult children. He indicates that he's a proud member of the First Presbyterian Church, and he says he enjoys scuba diving, distance swimming, dog lover, and he's a very poor golfer.[1346.23][1346.23](LAUGHTER) So I don't know if he's a poor golfer or a bad mathematician when it comes to golf. So if I can ask Phil to come up and his wife Debbie, and ask Mayor Patino to administer the oath of office, that will be followed by Mrs. Hanson pinning the badge on Chief
Raise your right hand.
You can come inside. You can come inside.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And that I will support and defend.
And that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I will enforce all laws of this country.
I will enforce all laws of this country.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the code of the City of Santa Maria.
And the code of the City of Santa Maria.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Without favor.
Without favor.
And without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
I will so conduct my private life.
I will so conduct my private life.
So that no discredit will be reflected.
So that no discredit can be reflected.
Against the City of Santa Maria.
Against the City of Santa Maria.
Or against the Police Department of the City of Santa Maria.
Or against the Police Department of the City of Santa Maria.
And I hereby subscribe.
And I hereby subscribe.
To the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
The Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
As adopted by the Peace Officers Association.
As adopted by the Peace Officers Association.
Of the State of California in 1956.
The State of California in 1956.
So help me God.
So help me God. Forty-two years married, she's put up with this, and all the late-night calls and everything else, so she's accustomed to it, and I certainly wouldn't be half the person I am without her support. There's no two ways about it. I have just some very, very brief remarks, and I know we have a full council agenda, so this is just going to take a moment, but I'm going to face in this direction because I want to see the troops in the back row there, and I want to see the citizens that are here from the city, and no disrespect to the council. Thank you also very much. First of all, I want you to know that, to me, it's a great privilege to work for this city, and in particular, for this wonderful police department. I've absolutely come to love the people on this department over the last four years, and I consider them truly a part of my family, and they've invited us to be part of theirs. Since the appointment was made public, many people have asked me if I'm excited about becoming the police chief, and they usually look a little surprised when I tell them "no." That's not the emotion that comes to mind, to tell you the truth. You see, this is a tremendous honor, but it's an honor that comes with tremendous responsibility. To me, it's a humbling responsibility, and one that I take very seriously, too seriously to get excited about. I am, however, both honored and humbled to assume this post, and I thank each and every one of you here today for giving me this opportunity. First of the men and women of the Santa Maria Police Department, I promise to care deeply for you and to represent you to the very best of my ability. I promise to be honest with you and to be as fair and objective in my dealings with you as I possibly can be. I promise to stand by you in times of trouble and to share in your failures as well as our successes. To the people of the City of Santa Maria, I promise to serve and protect this entire community to the best of my ability, regardless of your age, your gender, your social status, where you came from, or what language you speak. I strongly believe in constitutional policing. To me, that means that in government, we derive our authority from the consent of the very people that we serve. I promise that the men and women of this police department will serve this community with courage and with dignity, and in accordance with the laws that protect the very freedoms that we enjoy. And finally, thank you also very much for showing me the friendship and support that you have over the years, and I hope and pray that my actions will justify the faith and the trust that you've placed in me at this time.
Congratulations, Chief Hanson. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'd like to personally welcome you to the City Council, I'll put my mic back together, as a retired member of 36 years with this police department, as an involved citizen, as a husband, a father, and a grandparent, and a city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is Public Comment Period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. And we have nine requests to speak.
And we have nine requests to speak. Thank you. So, Mary Clark, followed by Sarah McDonald, followed by Danny Mog, and three minutes, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, members of council, Chief Hanson, who has left the building, wanted to welcome him too. My name is Mary Clark, and over a year ago, I stood at this site and talked about responsible pet care for the citizens of Santa Maria. Not long before that, I was here with my neighbors to talk to you about fireworks issues, and you very graciously and enthusiastically supported our efforts for zero tolerance of illegal fireworks. 2016 was a very productive time for the campaign, and the task force that you enacted was very successful in apprehending illegal fireworks and issuing fines to offenders. For the past few years, the Fourth of July has turned into a disgraceful day for our city. People run amok with banned explosives, and if it was just one night, I think we would be better equipped to deal with it and handle it, but it's not just one night. It indeed goes on and on for weeks and months, often unchecked, and always a nuisance, and very often a hazard. Every single year, starting on Memorial Day, the uptick in lost, missing, endangered, and wounded animals happens like clockwork. Our animal services, as well as the tremendous volunteer efforts here, work triple duty to ensure the safety of pets. There are tragedies involving somebody's pet every single year. But not only for the animals, but for those also affected by loud, continuous blasts, like my friends with noise sensitivities, PTSD, the frail and the elderly that I work with. It's not a matter of getting over it or sucking it up, these are very real problems and issues that cause a tremendous amount of anxiety for these folks. Lately, I have heard on more than one occasion, and by more than a few people, that Santa Maria has become lawless, and I cannot tell you how much that hurts my heart. I have lived here practically my entire life. The longer that this issue goes unchecked, the longer the lawless elements in this city will continue to abuse other citizens with their disrespectful behavior. I pay taxes, I own a home, I spend money in this community, I support work for nonprofits that are aimed at nutritional services for the elderly and at-risk seniors. To say that I am disgusted by the blatant disregard for people like me, like my friend James, like my late friend, great friend Martha Schepler, and every pet owner that has ever had to spend a dime to calm their pets because criminals are not held in check is an understatement. Therefore, I am asking council to enforce our zero tolerance policy to the maximum extent and charge offenders double and even triple what was previously amended. I ask that the police chief work with us in identifying repeat offenders. I ask you to take a long, hard look at what this city turns into four to five months out of the year, and how we can work to make it better for all of us, because it's our city too.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Sarah McDonald, followed by Danny Mog.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Sarah McDonald. I live in the area behind Foods Co., and I'm here to tell you, I've had it with illegal fireworks. I've had it. This does not just go from Memorial Day, it starts on January 1st. As a person who's recovering from cancer and has chronic illness, the noise alone drives me crazy when all this happens. And then, in our neighborhood, a few months ago, maybe it's even been a year, I believe it's a year, we had the death of Ulysses Garcia, one of the young shooting victims who are honored and respected by one community action in their memorial. That's in my neighborhood. So, I can't tell the difference between gunshots or the fireworks. We must have a zero tolerance. We must, we can't just call in, or if we try to call in and we're not respected and our responses are not honored. I mean, I didn't do it this year, but I was seeing a lot of my neighbors throughout this community who have been victimized. We've been victimized by the illegal fireworks. Something must be done, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danny Mog, followed by Lee Marie Mix.
Madam Mayor, council members, and citizens of Santa Maria, thank you for this opportunity to add these comments to the public record. My name is Danny Mog, and I'm a proud resident of the city of Santa Maria. Five and a half years ago, I was recruited for a position for a manufacturing firm here in Santa Maria, and an offer was extended, and I accepted. I'm a career manufacturing professional, and my current position is that of a process engineer. I make a fair wage, and my wife Cheryl and I have a comfortable life. Cheryl and I understand the value of buying local and making every attempt to contribute to the local economy. I offer this context as a backdrop to the recent news that there may be furloughs issued here in the city of Santa Maria due to a budget shortfall. I don't begrudge anyone a fair wage, but I was astonished to recently learn that we have a city official whose salary is nearly $400,000 annually. Additionally, I find it even more troubling that this particular official is not even a resident of the city of Santa Maria. Now, let's think about that for a minute and consider how much of that $400,000 salary is benefiting local businesses, like Pat's Automotive or Shaw's Steakhouse. So, over the past year, so it has occurred to me that I've been derelict in my duty as a citizen of the United States, a citizen of the state of California, and a citizen of the city of Santa Maria. Although I exercise my right to vote in every election, I, like many Americans, believe that this was a sum total of my obligation. I had convinced myself that this fulfilled my civic duty. Recent events at all levels of government have clearly proven that I could have not been more wrong. Yesterday, I was interested to read excerpts from the State of the City speech by Honorable Mayor Patino, it was published in the Santa Maria Times, and I would like to offer an alternative viewpoint. Mayor Patino stated that she was forced into recent decision to move to district elections. I could make an argument that many Santamarians, including myself, are forced into working with some of our city officials. This is democracy, and I can assure you, Madam Mayor, this is indeed Santa Maria. I'd like to remind you and the council members that district elections are an exercise in representative government. Representative government should be celebrated by lovers of democracy, one and all. One last point. This evening, we are welcoming our new police chief, Phil Hanson. Chief Hanson, welcome. I have several questions and concerns about this hire, but their process, not the least among them are concerns for the absence of public engagement in this decision. This is an alarming pattern that can, will, and must be addressed at the ballot box. I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you. Lee Marie Mix, followed by Vivian Engel. Lee, Leah Marie Mix, followed by Vivian, okay. Okay, if people would not clap, then they could hear the names that are being announced. Thank you very much.
Oh, good.
Followed by Vivian Engel, followed by Cynthia Gudino.
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay. Leah Marie Mix, I live in the northwest corner of Santa Maria. It's called Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates, very nice. This is the first time I have not worked on the Fourth of July. I have to supplement my Social Security with retail work, so it's quite a shock what I heard and saw and experienced. And I asked myself, "Do we really need legal fireworks in town?" So, I called, couldn't get any help. So, this is what I thought. The people who sell the legal fireworks, the charities, how about we stop the legal fireworks and we expand whatever that fireworks show is you have at night? I've never been able to go because of work. I don't know if you charge, but a minimal charge, even if you don't, then a portion of that charge ticket would go to the charity that sells the ticket. They won't lose, we don't lose, we all win. It's a win-win situation. It'll also help the veterans. I cannot believe what they went through, because I was a mess. So, this is just, I'm throwing this out at you, I don't know how it's done, how we can stop the fireworks sale by the people who can no longer sell them in Napa, so they come up here and sell them. Oh, thank you very much. So, I'd like to see the legal ones stopped, and I know we have to deal with the illegals fireworks. And my thought is, I envision a fire truck just hosing them down, block by block by block. I know we can't do it, but at least they'd be wet. And lastly, my background's criminal justice, probation, blah, 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 and if the chief or anyone needs help, I'd be more than happy to volunteer to get this going. And that's all I need to say.
Thank you so much. Vivian Engel, followed by Cynthia Gudino.
Good evening. My name is Vivian Engel, and I am the owner of a home or a house at 705 North Oakley. And it's about a 60-year-old house, and it's getting financially non-feasible to continue to try to make it modern and upgrade it. So, I'm starting the steps to go toward changing it from an R1 lot to an R2, and this is probably not the appropriate thing to do, but I brought some feasibility plans from my architect for each of you, if you're interested in seeing those. And I know that we're going through the planning department, and we'll do whatever's necessary. I've worked with them when I upgraded 275 East New Love, and I think it's a very nice upgrade with a lot of environmentally sensitive features, and I would like to do that kind of quality with this lot as well. So, if you're interested, I can pass it down.
Mr. Engel will take that from you.
With the housing shortage in Santa Maria, I'm really very much aware of the problem, and as a former social worker, I'm particularly aware of the needs for the lower income. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engel. Cynthia Gudino, followed by Morris Sobani, followed by Stephanie Ross.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia Gudino. Usually, you see me with the soccer community, but today, I'm actually changing gears. I actually work for Greckle Realty, we're a property management company here in Santa Maria, and we represent Ms. Vivian Engel here in town. So, we manage her properties, and she's an awesome landlord, takes care of her properties, makes sure that everything is up to date, everything's safe and secure for the tenants. And she wants to, you know, contribute to the housing market, have more units available for tenants, and right now, there's hardly any rentals out there. And whenever something does come up, it goes away, right away. Other than that, I also would like to talk about resolution that's going to happen today for reclassifying the administrative assistant positions, or several other positions within the city of Santa Maria. I hear, every single time I see a city of Santa Maria city council meeting, I hear the budget, I hear the financials, I go through everything, we are in a deficit. I don't understand, or it doesn't make sense to me that we're going to pass a furlough, however, we're going to be asking for pay raises for certain positions within the city manager's office. Certain reclassifications between, you know, instead of a regular secretary, it's going to be a confidential secretary, or office assistant two, it's going to change into confidential officer, office clerk two. The raises are amazing to me. One of the pay increases is almost $1,086.34 bi-weekly. We're talking about almost $2,200 a month that this person's going to be actually getting a pay raise on, and it's going to be on the 22th of July. So, what we need to understand is, the city is not in a position to be doing those things. Maybe they do deserve it, maybe they do need it, but the city needs it more. I am so sorry, but we need to figure out how to work with this, so we don't put the city in a bigger debt than it is in already. It doesn't matter if it's already included in the next budget for the next year, it doesn't matter. If we can actually save this amount of money, let's do it. I mean, we can't be doing these increases, it just can't happen, I'm sorry. But thank you so much for your time, and I will be coming back for the rest of the meetings to see what happens, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Morris Sobani, followed by Stephanie Ross, followed by Ernest Armenta.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Member, I'm here before you because, at the last regular meeting, you did not take action on item number four, rezoning of property at 402 Farnell Road. The city planning staff and the majority of the planning commission member approved this thing. We complied and met all the requirements we obtained, the additional parking, and not only 1012 that you requested, but instead 20 parking spaces. We came before you at May 2017 meeting, and to our surprise, you not only renegate your promise, but you also demonstrated your partiality and biasness toward the property owner at Walmart Shopping Center. In spite of our efforts and obtaining the extra parking spaces, some of you ignored it and started discussing the issue that you brought up in February meeting. In addition, Councilwoman Waterfield had the audacity of asking why we are paying $3,600 for six months of rental parking. Madam Councilwoman, that translates into $600 per month, which calculate up to a dollar per day for parking. That is, by any standard, is not a high price. I don't know why you asked that question. If that was not enough, you then publicly, on the microphone, in front of the other property owners and representative, started encouraging my tenant to the other landlord vacant unit. Why would a council member try to take away my tenant to another location? In fact, Councilman Jack Boyson was agreeing with Councilwoman Waterfield's recommendation and nodding his head. Now, we understand why majority of these council members were disagreeing with the approval of the planning commission and planning staff, and made us to go through all the hoops to obtain the parking lot and do all the work that you've asked us to do. If this action of your members was not unlawful, in my opinion, it was unethical and discriminatory. It also proved that you were influenced. If you have taken an oath of office to uphold the rights of the people and discharge your obligation without partiality or favoritism, we did not receive this one. In view of the above, we urge you
Go ahead, Mr. Sobani.
In view of the above, we urge you to please correct this injustice by bringing the item back to the council meeting for reconsideration. But I feel one or two of the council members should recuse themselves because of their inappropriate statement.
Thank you, Mr. Sobani. Stephanie Ross, followed by Ernest Armenta.
Mayor Patino, city council members, Chief Hanson, and citizens. At 9:30 on July 4th, I drove over the bridge into Santa Maria to see a dazzling display of fireworks. Unfortunately, only a fraction was from Pioneer Park. But that night isn't even the main problem. Each year, starting in May or before, we're subjected to illegal fireworks, disturbing the peace in our homes and our neighborhoods, frightening our elderly, our veterans, our disabled, our pets. To a lesser extent, my peace is disturbed when loud booms startle me at all hours, or my 60-pound German shorthair jumps in my lap. Last year, I attended city council meetings and a special meeting Last year, I attended city council meetings and a special meeting of city officials. Our group was very encouraged by the actions taken, seemed to help a bit, and we thought it was a start. Looks like we might have been mistaken. I understand not a single citation was issued this year. I understand there are difficulties in enforcing the illegal fireworks things, but I don't know if that's an excuse. To the best of my knowledge, the ordinance is still on the books, and I'd like to know if we can expect it to be enforced at all, and if the city has no intention of doing so, at least be honest with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ernest Armenta.
Ernesto Armenta, City of Santa Maria. Well, for you folks at home, you hear other, the community members who come out of their homes here, they, they really would, they really would rather be at home, but you heard all the folks here, they come out of their home to come here and voice their concerns that they have with this city council. So, I, I've been hammering on the, on the city council for years, and I'm talking about how they're so out of touch with the community, but guess what, ladies and gentlemen, you at home, it's our fault. Yeah, you take some blame too, laziness, or maybe it's intellectually incompetent, maybe stupidity, maybe you folks at home just don't want to participate, maybe you're so burned out on the elected officials that usually say, "The heck with it, you do what you want, I really don't give a damn." Well, ladies and gentlemen, things are not getting better here in the city. We don't have money for fire departments, we don't have money to fix the roof on the police department, we don't even have money to replace the playgrounds, but we got money for bonuses, we got money to hire all kinds of new employees. I, I mean, we're, I have no personal vendetta against any of you, but I think it's time that Boyson, Eda Waterfield, Councilman Moats, oh, excuse me, Dr. Moats and Mr. Cordero, I think it's time for you folks just to go. It is, truly, we're, we're done. I mean, you can't, you can't deny it, that you can hear it, the word, the word displeased, we don't feel representative. I come here and I, my, my purpose here is I find for those to be unfair business practice. You are pitting department against a department, employees against employees. My proposal is that you, all, if 60% of employees hired prior to 2011, that that group be shifted to the second tier, meaning let's remove and dissolve the two-tier system. Even Steven, there are going to be no furloughs, no one's getting no time off, everybody's going to be able to work, but everybody will contribute the same to this city. I think it's unfair business practice to have two police officers, two firefighters, we're going to go to the roof and van it, or into the room, or et cetera, or remove someone from a vehicle, and just because I was hired after 2011, I have to contribute more. Can you imagine the two officers that respond to the same call? One's been on the job for 20 years, one's been on the job for 20 days, and that, and yeah, public safety, pardon my, you want me, the person who's been on the job 20 days to contribute more? I, Mr. Cordero, I have no animosity, okay? You retired, you put a lot of work in, Ms. Patino, all of you, but I think it's time, we're done with you folks.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta.
It's really time for you folks to just be removed and get to stepping. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, wish, do you wish to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the city council, a couple, a couple items I just wanted to comment on. One, the couple residents had a concern regarding the voluntary time off policy that's before you. It's agenda item 3E, and that it's not fair that we're forcing it on the employees. The very first word is called voluntary. It's mentioned 10 times in the staff report. It's not a mandatory time off policy, it's a voluntary time off policy. So, if the employees choose to take it and take advantage of it, they can do so, and they would be saving the city money from that perspective. With regards to agenda item, I believe it is 3C, on the personnel changes and the concern for paying employees, the city has a practice, and actually, it's, it's a fair labor practice item that you get into, is when you have an employee working outside of their job specification, you're obligated to pay them for the duties above and beyond what the normal scope of work is, and that's what agenda item 3C is about. There was a number of concerns from residents regarding the activities on the 4th of July, the weeks preceding, and then thereafter. I've asked Chief Champion to provide us an after-action report on the 4th of July, the activities from a police perspective and a fire perspective. What I can tell you is last Friday, I attended a meeting of the tri-county city managers, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and San Luis Obispo County. This was one of the topics of discussion, because each city on the central coast is faced with the use of illegal fireworks. No one is coming up with any solutions in which to resolve it. They did like the ideas that we had with regards to the administrative citations. However, the, the problem that we run into is that in order to issue a citation, an officer has to see perpetrator actually lighting the illegal firework, otherwise, they can't issue a citation. That's why we rely on the public to provide us information on administrative citations, but we didn't receive any, any guidance this year from that. We received a lot of phone calls, but there were not any parties that we were aware of that actually wanted to assist the police department in signing their name on the dotted line that they saw someone else light an illegal firework. So, with that, I will defer to Chief Champion for an after-action report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Chief Champion.
First of all, I'd like to say that we had a very successful fireworks show this year. The Red, White &amp; Boom fireworks show out on Panther Drive by Sierra Vista Park was attended by more than 1,200 people. We had a lot of vendors out there, a lot of families enjoying the events, and on a positive note, it was very successful. Just to recap on the involvement and impacts to the fire department, we had 31 calls compared to 36 calls last year, so we had a dip in number there. We had two small grass fires, one related to, it appears to be related to fireworks, and one trash can fire. Last year, we had four grass fires and five trash can fires, so we did see a reduction in those incidents. We also had no report of property damage or injuries reported. Last year, we had one minor walk-in injury over at Marion Medical Center. I would like, I appreciate all the comments by the public, and I would like to just answer some of the concerns and questions that came up. We did issue one citation. That citation compared to last year, which we had roughly 13 citations. To give you a little bit of perspective, last year, our task force logged, at least for our department, 263 hours, equating to roughly $20,000 to our budget. We up-staffed a fire engine last year, and we had two of our prevention personnel involved with those efforts. In combination with other city officials, police department involvement, code enforcement, the city spent about $60,000 to $80,000 last year. So, this year, we're trying to become a little bit more fiscally responsible. We put all of our efforts into prevention and education. We did a very extensive campaign in the media with the fireworks booths themselves to get the word out. There was the one citation where somebody came forward and was willing to put their name on a citation. There were very few complaints to the fire department specifically, but we did receive a few. Our fire marshal addressed those, and we did get positive comments back. So, we did receive some concerns, we addressed those concerns, and we did see a positive uptick in that area. As far as the city, the municipal code allows 20, upwards of 34 fireworks booths in the city. We have 25. There's been some concerns about the fireworks booth nonprofits being from outside the city limits. And according to the municipal code, the metropolitan area of the city is defined to include the unincorporated county area immediately surrounding the city limits, including the township of Orchid. So, of the 25 booths that we have here in Santa Maria, 15 nonprofits are within the city. The nonprofits are within the city. We do have a waiting list of about 15 nonprofits that are in the wings, waiting to participate if an opening occurs. So, that's a general recap of the events, and I also would like to talk about the animal shelter. I did have a conversation with County Animal Services. Stacy Silva gave some numbers for us. This year, there were seven dogs that were obtained on the 4th of July, compared to three dogs last year, and in total, 44 animals were gathered up over a four-day period, two days preceding of the 4th and two days post 4th of July. So, that is a wrap-up of the events for the 4th, and I will take any other questions or concerns from council.
Any questions from the council?
I have, I have a question.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes. Hopefully, next year, we're going to spice things back up as we did the previous year before, because there, I have to agree with a lot of the speakers here that there was a lot of disruption with the fireworks, and it did start in May, and it didn't end until, well, they're still going off. So, I would appreciate next year that we get on it early with the education and make sure that we nip this in the behind.
I got a call from a gentleman that lives in the southern part of the city, and, and I can't remember what plant it's called, but it was like, and we probably had a fire truck all the way out there because it went around the front of his house.
Juniper hedge.
Yes, a juniper hedge. And, and he was so quiet on the phone when he was talking to me, but he said, "You really need to come and see it." And I drove out there to see it, and I thought, I would have been really still pretty excited if I had seen that in my front yard. It was, it was scary. He said the flames were, is higher than the house. So, and that wasn't illegal, that was not illegal. But even if a small child had been walking by and be hit by that illegal, and it's, I think it's almost a matter of time before those things happen.
Yeah. Two-thirds of those 31 calls occurred after 6 o'clock at night, so we were very busy. I know the police department was very busy. They received 200 and, about 250 phone calls on the hotline, and then they pushed those out to the officers in the field through their MDCs, their mobile data computers, and responded to those as, as they could get to them. But, we have only 15 firefighters on duty every day, and so, for those 31 calls, they're busy, and we will respond to those calls as needed and prioritize and triage those as they come in.
Madam Mayor, I have one more suggestion. Maybe next year, we can start in January. I know that Leah Marie Nix had said she would volunteer, maybe if we could get a group of people who would volunteer to help scout out and seek out, and just come together to volunteer to, to make a more quiet and legal 4th of July happen. I'd be more than willing to help out on that effort as well.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Chief, I had a question. Whose jurisdiction is it to seek out these rockets being launched into the air? The police department or the fire department?
Well, it certainly is, kind of falls into both. The only one that can really write a citation is a peace officer. So, even though our prevention officers can go out and assist and ID potential violators, we have to have a police officer there for the prevention safety. So, it kind of falls on both. Last year, we, we coupled up our prevention officers with police officers to go out and, and observe and, and report on those illegal fireworks.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Champion, I, like Councilwoman Eda Waterfield, have to agree with many of these people, some are my neighbors here. So, my particular canine doesn't respond negatively. I happen to know that a close friend of mine lost a dog during the fireworks. The dog escaped and, and was killed on the freeway. So, so, this is a real genuine concern on the part of our, our, our community, but it's, this isn't all it is. It isn't just the things going up in the air and the banging noise that you hear. There is another side to this, and maybe you can explain that side where you mentioned the nonprofit groups. There's a significant amount of money that is made for these groups, and we'd have to make that up some kind of way, and I say "we" as a community. You're not going to like the idea that we, that something happens, and all of a sudden, these tens of thousands of dollars are no longer available to provide the services that some people in this room, or were in this room, may be seeking themselves, including myself. So, so, it's, it's a difficult, it's not an easy remedy here. And just from an enforcement standpoint, I heard somebody say they have to witness them lighting the thing. This is, this is a difficult thing for law enforcement to come along and, and make a successful arrest just while you're driving down, driving down the street. It's going to take significant investigation, and it, so it is, it is really a hard thing to do. I think the control is probably on the importation of these things. Just for the heck of it, I'd like to stop at one of these places and find out just how much these big cannonballs are, because they're going off literally by the hundreds.
You're absolutely correct. It's difficult to control the influx from out of the state of these illegal fireworks. The Safe &amp; Sound fireworks have been around Santa Maria since 1955, and I can say that I live in the Orchid area where Safe &amp; Sound are not allowed, and it was just the same. It was pretty crazy. After talking with Dave Zanaboni, he's the PIO, Public Information Officer with Santa Barbara County Fire, they did not have any significant events in the county, which, again, when you look at the statistics, it's pretty amazing that we don't have more injuries, more fires. The data isn't supporting that. It is a bit concerned regarding pets, our veterans, you know, experiencing PTSD, those sorts of things. It is, it's not an easy subject to, to handle, but we're doing our best. We have, city staff has done an excellent job in trying to get the information out there early. Even around the first of the year, we've done, we've done an uptick in outreach programs as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief Champion. Mr. Hayden?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Councilmember Waterfield brought up the issue that we start earlier next time in January. You know, we do have Ms. Mix that volunteered. We still have the list of the community group that we met with last year. We met with about 15 to 20 individuals last year that were very supportive in our cause, that we were able to successfully deter a lot of fireworks from going off last year. We still have their list, their contact information. I see a couple of them here in the audience this evening. My suggestion is later this, this fall, towards the end of the calendar year, we regroup with members of the police department, fire department, co-compliance, and then also with community members to see what we can do, putting together another task force to mitigate this issue from, from being not as disruptive as it has been this last year.
I'm just wondering if we could do something like a neighborhood watch type of thing in different neighborhoods, and maybe that, that could come out of this task force, because I'm sure, I, I've heard from more people this year than I ever have.
Yes.
And I'm sure there's a lot of people that would volunteer.
We can put something together for that.
Okay. And we all have cameras within our phones, so maybe that could be something that could be used as well for evidence.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. I want to thank all of you that came tonight to public comment. That is very helpful for all of us sitting up here. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine, routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the- as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Thank you. And before moving on to taking action of the consent calendar, I'd like to publicly, publicly announce a summary of council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers as required by government code section 54953. Accordingly, before the city council this evening, part of the agenda, item 3C, is a recommendation to approve a reclassification of the deputy city manager to assistant city manager, which will equate to a 5.86 percent salary increase. So, do we have any, anyone has items for discussion or any items we need to pull?
Madam Mayor, I just want to let you know that I am going to abstain from item G, payment of warrants.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Mr. Boyson?
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, except for G. Having heard the motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Then move for approval for item number G. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item G. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
The next order of business is the annual appointments to boards. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider appointments to the block grants advisory committee, the landmark committee, library board of trustees, and the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee, and direct staff to continue advertising vacancies on the Board of Appeals and Measure U 2012 Citizens Oversight Committee, along with any other board or committee that still has vacancies.
Do we have any, do we have any requests to speak?
We do not have any requests to speak.
Okay. So, would you like to continue?
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the request before you tonight is to make various appointments to the boards and committees just mentioned. I'll present the boards one at a time for consideration of the appointments and the council's ratification. The block grants advisory committee, the block grants advisory committee currently has four vacancies. Staff received applications from two incumbents, Esther Acosta and Kelly White O'Neil, and two new applications from Cassandra Bennett and Kathy Hayes. The appointment, the appointees will serve a term of three years each. Nominations may be made by council members Boyson, Moats, Waterfield, or Madam Mayor Patino. Appointments will then be confirmed by Madam Mayor with ratification by the city council.
So, Councilmember Boyson, do you have a nomination?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to reappoint Kelly White O'Neil.
Okay. And I will second that motion. So, Madam Clerk, do you need a roll call on that?
Why don't we do all the nominations?
You want to do them all?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Moats, do you have a nomination?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Esther Acosta for another term on the Block Grants Committee.
And Ms. Waterfield, do you have a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I do not have a nomination at this time.
And I do not have a nomination. I've been out of town and did not have the opportunity to interview a potential candidate. So then we have a motion for, for Mr. Boyson for Kelly White O'Neil, and a motion for Councilmember Moats for Esther Acosta. I will second both of those. And I'll accept the nominations. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Councilmember Waterfield?
And are they in the audience right now? I don't see them. Okay. So, Madam Clerk, could you please continue?
The next committee is the landmark committee. There's one vacancy to fill an unexpired term ending in January 2018. One application was received from Kyler Corral, and the appointment is to be made by Madam Mayor Patino with ratification by the city council.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint Kyler Corral to the landmark committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion from the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes. My understanding is that Kyler couldn't be here tonight due to a school scheduling, so, thank you, Kyler. Going on, next appointment. Madam Clerk, could you please continue?
The next is the library board of trustees. There's one expiring term. Incumbent Laura Selken has reapplied. No other applications were received. Madam Mayor Patino will make the appointment with ratification by the city council.
Okay. I will appoint Laura Selken to the library board of trustees.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And is Laura here? Oh, there's Laura. Could you stand up so everyone can see you?
Thank you so much, Laura. Thank you for willing to serve. Let's see. Madam Clerk, can you continue?
Our final committee is the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee. There's one expiring term on the county of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee, and incumbent Marilyn Ayers has reapplied. No other applications were received, and Madam Mayor Patino will make the appointment with ratification by the city council.
I will make the motion to appoint Marilyn Ayers to the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee.
Aye.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. I have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Boy, I'm getting way ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Marilyn? Would you like to stand, please? Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Ma'am? Ma'am?
Yes.
These people all serve without compensation, right?
They certainly do.
The question was that all of these people serve without compensation, so we owe them not only a handshake, but a serious thank you for their donation.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Cordero. That's very important. Now, I'd like to move to direct staff to re-advertise vacancies on the Board of Appeals, the Measure U 2012 Citizens Oversight Committee, the CDPG Advisory Committee, and any other boards or committees that still have vacancies. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion at the council? Hearing none? Could you just say aye? I'll be fine.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider protests to the proposed assessments for the city's annual weed abatement program to be collected as part of the 2017-18 property tax rolls.
And the staff report is to be made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Khan.
I thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. The Public Works Department administers the annual weed abatement program. City posts lots with weeds, rubbish, and refuse to abate the nuisance. Of the 228 lots we posted, 213 property owners abated their nuisance. This action will assess the 13 remaining property owners for our contractor abating the nuisances on their lot. This ends my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Khan? Okay. Do we have any written communications?
We do not.
Okay. I'd like to open up the public hearing for any protests.
We have no requests to speak.
No requests to speak. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion.
Mr. Cordero?
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution number 2017-89 be adopted confirming the report of the weed abatement costs and directing the cost to be submitted to the Santa Barbara County collections with the 2017-18 property tax rolls.
Okay. Second. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve resolution 2017-89. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
The next order of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider an ordinance making various technical amendments to the Santa Maria municipal code.
The staff report is to be made by Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Malinkoff.
Madam Mayor, City Council. This project with doing technical amendments to the municipal code is typically one that the city attorney's office brings forth annually in January. This year, we had some very voluminous technical amendments in January. Once that process was completed, I received a number of contacts from various departments requesting additional revisions. And so, that's why this is before you this evening. Of the technical amendments, clearly the vast majority are simply clarifying typographical errors, changing terminology from subsection to section, or ordinance to chapter, and eliminating redundancies in our municipal code. So unless you have any further questions of me, then it is my turn.
Any questions of Ms. Malinkoff? I do not.
I have a question.
Sure. Mr. Cordero?
Ms. Malinkoff, is any of the changes that you know personally, are they changes in the, that are going to direct new activities, or are they just basically what I would call wordsmithing?
It is, it is wordsmithing, I think, in your sense of the phrase. It's essentially taking phrases in the code that were perhaps unclear and conforming them to current practice.
Okay, so the ordinances you're gonna work on are not gonna change any action that anyone's doing?
Correct.
Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We have one request to speak.
Okay. Any written communications?
No.
No? Okay. Mr. Ernest Armenta?
Ernesto Armenta, City of Santa Maria. My Honorable Mayor, I'd like to see if you can give me, you yourself, can you give me some clarification on section two, item four? It says, "Step C will be paid upon completion of one year of employee in salary step B, where the employee has demonstrated satisfactory job progress and normally increasing productivity, except for management, for his personnel and sworn police officers." So, I'm trying to see if I got this right. Police officers and I guess public safety have to go, job performance evaluation. But management doesn't? Maybe I'm reading it wrong. I'm just looking at this. It's underlined, so I'm trying to get some clarification.
Okay.
Do we do job performance evaluations on management? Maybe Mrs. Malinkoff can I?
Yes, Ms. Malinkoff, could you please answer that?
I'm sorry, maybe I missed.
No.
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
The clarification, the reason it is underlined is because that is new proposed language to the municipal code. But in direct response to Mr. Armenta's question, yes, all employees of the City of Santa Maria are evaluated at some point during, during the year.
Do this, please, one more, just, tell me exactly what does except, except for management mean to you, when you, when you, when I'm reading this? That means they're excluded when I read that. That's what the language says. Except for management, fire personnel and sworn police officers, personnel who must demonstrate satisfactory job progress, except for management. Now, maybe, maybe we don't speak the same language, so I don't understand, but I need some clarification before I walk away.
Okay. Ms. Malinkoff?
This is related specifically to promotion, promotionals, and advancement.
Okay.
I would request, Madam Mayor, that you do not approve that language and that you include management. You remove except for management. I want them to go through the same process exactly. Remove that language, so we'll know that management is gonna do the same thing as police and fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. Okay. I'd, oh, Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the, the confusion gets into where it says except for management. If I can read it?
Sure.
It says, "Step C will be paid upon completion of one year of employment in salary steps B, where the employee has demonstrated satisfactory job progression and normal increasing productivity, except for management."
Period.
Period. Management, we expect superior performance. We don't expect satisfactory performance or normal increasing productivity. We have a higher standard for management employees. That's why we say except for management.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. I'll bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move for approval of ordinance number 2017-10?
My Honorable Mayor?
Mr. Armenta? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Not even one second?
Not even one second.
Okay, then we'll take it on the next item.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve ordinance 2017-10. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Did you second that?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a resolution extending the expiration date of urgency ordinance number 2016-18, imposing a moratorium on the manufacturing, processing, laboratory testing, labeling, storing, and wholesale and retail distribution of cannabis, and introducing an ordinance repealing chapter 12-54 cannabis regulations from the zoning code, and adding new chapter 6-12 cannabis regulations in the public safety and welfare code of the Santa Maria municipal code.
The staff report is to be made by Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Malinkoff.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, City Council. So, as you know from following the news, the area of the regulation of cannabis has been a very hot topic for local municipalities, counties, and the state in the past several months. With the passage of the proposition allowing for the adult use of cannabis in November, the field has drastically changed. And a number of our local municipalities and counties are in the process of determining how they wish to regulate cannabis and/or tax cannabis activity. And so, at your direction, we have prepared a resolution. First, continuing the expiration date of the urgency ordinance that was passed by the city council previously for the period of one year. And also, the city attorney's office has prepared a new cannabis ordinance that would replace the ordinance that's currently in chapter 12 and placing it into our nuisance section in the municipal code that essentially reflects the current status in Santa Maria of how we regulate cannabis, with essentially complete bans on all cannabis activity, with the exception of delivery to medical marijuana patients. And so, that is before you, for consideration. The extension of the urgency ordinance is necessary because of the timing. If you do, in fact, pass the proposed ordinance, it has to come to you before a second reading, and then it becomes effective 30 days later. So there would be about a 17-day gap between the expiration of the urgency ordinance and the implementation of the new ordinance, during which cannabis businesses could theoretically become established and then have legal non-conforming status. Are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Malinkoff? Mr. Boyson?[1665.83]
Ms. Malinkoff, how many times can the emergency or the urgency ordinance be adopted? I mean, can this be done on an annual basis?
This is the last time.
We can do it one time.
We can do it one more time for one year, yes.
Madam Mayor, I do have a question. I understand that the banning of cultivation also includes growing, but just to keep the words in there, can we add growing of cannabis and then the banning of the cultivation, just so that we cover all the words that in case someone would try to argue? That would be in the, number one, the adoption of the resolution where it says the IE, yeah?
Well, the actual verbiage of the ordinance, if you look at Section 2, the definition of cultivation is defined as "any activity involving the planting, growing, harvesting, drying," etc.
And then that's all, that all is included? Because I understand they can only, for medical reasons, only six plants are allowed. Is that correct?
Under the new proposition, the city is not authorized to regulate up to six plants per residence, not per occupant residence, but six plants per residence, yes.
Okay. Dr. Moats?
Six plants that you can grow on your own property, is that in effect now?
Yes. The statute, the statute became, proposition when it passed, it became effective immediately.
Okay. And you have to either grow it indoors, or you can grow it outdoors, but it has to be locked?
Correct.
What does that mean? Can you grow it in your backyard and lock your gate?
It cannot be visible from public view, and it must be locked and secured, yes.
Is your backyard a secure place?
My own personal backyard? I have a 200-dummy bus mastiff, so probably.
That's true, you do. It says the city may regulate home cultivation by requiring residential cultivation permits. Do we have such permits, and are people applying for them, and how much does the city get from that?
The city does not currently have a residential cultivation permit process. That is something if the City Council wished to direct the city to implement, we could certainly look at that. One of the considerations, or some of the considerations that are very important in that area is, first of all, enforcement. If people are cultivating it properly in their home outside of public view and it's locked, we're not going to really have a way to know that activity is going on. And then number two is just then staffing that would be necessary to monitor, to enforce the permitting process.
Another question. The voters of Santa Barbara County voted 62% to 38% to legalize recreational marijuana. And even the City of Santa Maria voted 51% to 49% to legalize recreational marijuana. Yet here we're coming up with an ordinance to keep them, keep it from being legal. Do you find a contradiction in that, or is that for us to decide?
That's your decision to make as a policymaker. I'm just here to implement your policy.
Okay. It's legal to have a transport service bring marijuana from presumably San Luis Obispo County into Santa Maria for people that have medical reasons for it. And we charge those people a fee for a license to transport it, and that's only $500 for a license. And it says something about, is there anything about the volume that they bring into the, and how much is the volume? How much marijuana is coming from San Luis County into Santa Maria for people with cancer and pain?
We have no way of regulating that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Cordaro, did you have questions?
Yeah, well, just to comment on Dr. Moats, for Dr. Moats, I don't, I don't know how you're going to be able to find that information out on the tonnage that's coming from San Luis County, or any, anyplace else. But I can tell you that they're active enough that they're issuing out business cards at some locations in the community to say, "If you need your marijuana delivered, give us a call and we'll put it on Pony Express and get it to you." So, and I'd also like to mention that it says "six plants." My experience in the drug business is that even at a home grower that doesn't have a great deal, but if he or she has a certain amount of experience, they can net well over $1,000 a plant, if it was for sale. So, so the law was passed, but it is clearly, in my opinion, a bit obscure because it's not going to be just grown for personal use. I, I think that every respectable law enforcement person in the world is going to tell you that they're going to be, somebody's going to be selling it.
There are certainly unintended consequences that I'm certain we will see with the current status of the confusion of the law and the lack of regulation in the area to date.
Mr. Boyson?
And, Madam Mayor, and I guess my question would be, Ms. Malinkoff, if we chose to pass the urgency ordinance tonight and not the permanent ordinance, we could still pass the permanent ordinance anytime within the next year. Is that right?
That's correct. One of the options that I provided in the staff report is you could pass, extend the urgency ordinance for a year, so it would expire in August of next year, 2018, and give our office direction to prepare some different regulation of cannabis.
And my, to be honest, I would, I would lean towards the permanent ordinance, but I just wonder if there are not some, as you've mentioned, unintended consequences that may come up during the year that we could either tighten it up, or we could, we would decide that maybe we want to allow a certain activity or whatever. As Dr. Moats said, it was a very close vote within the City of Santa Maria itself, and I, you know, this is, this is all very new to everyone.
One of the options as well is if you do elect to pass the ordinance as the current ban is reflective of, you can always give direction to the City Attorney's Office to draft amendments or changes to the municipal code that we could bring on for further consideration at a later date.
Any other questions of Ms. Malinkoff? Yes, Dr. Moats?
Just one more.
Sure.
I learned by reading the staff report that there's an organization called the Cannabis Enforcement Committee, which was set up by the city with various department heads that know a lot about this, to monitor what other cities are doing. Wouldn't it be appropriate for them to make a report before we make a decision on something like this?
I am, the Cannabis Enforcement Committee, along with Mr. Jason Stillwell and a representative from the Rangers and the Police Department.
What's your report?
You've got a stack of it right here.
Are you going to make a staff recommendation or a committee recommendation for us?
The committee, the committee has had the opportunity to review the draft ordinance, and we're all in favor of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We have one request to speak.
Any written communication?
And no written communication.
Mr. Ernest Armenta?
Ernest Armenta, City of Santa Maria. I'm going to be in opposition to this ordinance. Marijuana industry is thriving. Mr. Cordaro knows that. It's thriving right now. But I was shocked by Mr. Councilman Moats. So if I got this right, Jack Boyson, Ed O'Waterfield, Ms. Patino, Mike Cordaro and Mr. Moats, you allow the importing, if I got this right, you allow the importing of delivery medical marijuana, or just pot, marihuana, from outside of the city into the city? You guys actually allow it? Did I get that right, Mr. Hayden? So everybody listening, we have the City Council banning hometown people from growing or distributing, opening cannabis shops. Okay, no problem. But at the same time, ladies and gentlemen, the City Council is allowing folks from San Luis County to import marijuana and deliver it over town. Now, you know, I'm, I'm not on this council, but it seemed that you guys are, you guys are talking from both sides, from both sides here. It doesn't make, I mean, it absolutely, it doesn't, it doesn't even look right or even smell right, Mr. Cordaro.
Well, I'd just say that I didn't, wasn't here when they passed that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Last but not least, Ms. Patino, if you would allow me. I understand that the last agenda item, Mr., I'll quit by this, Mr. Hayden said, "Hey, we, management have superior standards."
You know what, Mr. Armenta?
Right?
I can't, I can't talk about-
Well, I think the Police Department should have those standards too.
We're not going to talk about a previous item.
Well, I have to sneak it in.
I know, and thank you. But I want to make a clarification on that. There was only three of us here when they passed the delivery on marijuana. Dr. Moats was not here, and Mr. Cordaro was, and I voted against it. So that's, that's a clarification.
But let me, let me tell you, when you decided to run for City Council, you inherit all prior decisions. That's, that's the way it is. You don't get to pass the buck and say, "Oh, I wasn't here, don't blame me."
No, no, I was here.
You, you, you guys were all community members.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Armenta.
You had the opportunity, wait, time line up, you had ample opportunity as a private citizen to come to this council.
Yes.
You had every opportunity to come to this council. Don't try to pass the buck and say, "Oh, I wasn't here."
No, no, I was, no, I said I was here.
Because we know you were here. Each and every one of you were community members.
Yes.
You had ample opportunity to come here and address this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. And I'll bring this back to the council for a discussion or a motion.
Well, just from a discussion purpose, my prefer, I will go with the wish of the rest of the council. My preference would be to extend the urgency ordinance for a year, and during that time, just to make sure that whatever permanent ordinance we come up with, whatever restrictions we come up with, is really in the best interest of the city. That would be a recommendation, but I'd like to hear from my fellow counsel.
Okay. Any other? Dr. Moats?
Well, I'd like to agree with Councilwoman Boyce, and I think we should take the temporary proposal. It's for one year, and kind of think about it a little bit more. Like Mr. Armenta says, you know, there's a lot of marijuana out there, and we've kind of let the genie out of the bottle. But the genie was let out of the bottle by the voters of the state of California. So they may be wrong-minded about it, but that's what the people say we should do. I kind of look into the future, and I see 10 or 15 years, we probably will have marijuana dispensaries on South Broadway. But it's hard to say. I think that some things we might need to consider doing that don't actively involve having dispensaries or growing marijuana in the city would be to consider testing labs, the testing labs, which we have the ability to create and tax, have high-paying jobs, bachelor's requirements, biology degrees, they test for pesticides and THC levels, could bring good-paying jobs. And the question about delivery systems, we have a delivery system now that brings marijuana in, but only for the compassionate program where people have cancer or severe pain. That would be something else that might be an income stream for the city, rather than having some potheads decide they need some more and drive up to Napomo and get it, or Grover Beach. Those are things that might be considered as maybe an income stream for the city. We don't want to become the marijuana capital like Lompoc maybe does, or Grover Beach. But anyways, I kind of agree with Councilwoman Boyce, and that's how I'm going to vote.
So with that?
I just, I just want to make a clarification. When we did vote last year on it, it was a compassionate plea from a former City Council person to a very dear friend who was suffering through cancer. And that is why we allowed the delivery of what needed to happen in that particular case. And while Ms. Patino did not agree with it, which was her choice, she probably saw the unintended consequences of allowing deliveries into the City of Santa Maria. So we, maybe we do need to look at it and take things out.
Okay. I need a motion?
So the motion would be, I would move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2017-90 to be adopted, extending the urgency ordinance, number 2016-18, for one more year.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion is to adopt Resolution 2017-90, and, and urgency ordinance 2016-18 by one year prohibiting manufacturing, processing, laboratory testing, labeling, storing and wholesale and retail distribution of cannabis. There's a motion and a second. And any further discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider an ordinance amending the Santa Maria Municipal Code to revise the start time for regularly scheduled City Council meetings.
And the staff report is to be made by Deputy City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
And filling in for Mr. Stillwell will be Mr. Hayden this evening.
Mr. Hayden, I was going to say, okay.
He has big shoes, but I could try to fill him in.
Okay.
At the last City Council meeting of June 20th, the City Council raised the issue of making regular City Council meeting start times earlier. Starting regular City Council meetings earlier would allow the opportunity for more discussion on agenda items, as well as provide the opportunity to finish meetings earlier. Other potential benefits of an earlier start time might be an increase in public participation and enable the public, especially our local youth members, primarily high school civic students and Boy Scouts, to actually stay through the entire City Council meetings. Earlier City Council meetings would also provide more time for our media to cover their stories and to complete their stories in anticipation for their print deadlines. The motion would be to recommend an ordinance for first reading and continue to the next meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the municipal code to revise the start times for regularly scheduled City Council meetings from the current 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM. In the alternative, should the City Council decide to change the meeting time to 5:30, then staff would recommend amending the ordinance, ordinance number 2017-12, to reflect a 5:30 start time, and then possibly reassess this issue in six months. That concludes my staff report.
Okay. Mr. Boyson?
Well, I brought this up originally, and I certainly think the benefits of an earlier start time outweigh any, any of the negatives. I realize that for some people, it's going to be more difficult to get here by, if we decide on 5:30 or 6:00. But my preference would be to try the 5:30 out. And I was even perhaps thinking that if we wanted to have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, as well as at the end of the meeting, for those people that weren't able to get here right at 5:30, that that could probably possibly accommodate them. But I just, you know, especially when we have a group of kids in here that are waiting for an agenda item, and, you know, it's 7:30, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock before we get to it. A lot of these kids have homework, et cetera, et cetera. But, and I, quite honestly, I look at our department heads who I know work very, very hard. I know, I've, I've called several of them well before 8 o'clock in the morning, and they're at their desks, and, you know, asking them to stay here till 6:30 and on past 8 o'clock, et cetera, you know, giving them a chance to get home to their families as well. So I would be in favor of taking a six-month trial run at the 5:30 and see how that works.
Is that a motion?
Well, I think we need to go through-
Yeah, we need to discuss this first, yeah.
We need to discuss it.
Well, I, I think that would be nice, but I'd also think 3 o'clock would be great too. But if we can't have 3, I guess 5:30 would be sufficient. But I, I don't know what's wrong with 3 either. 3 would be good.
Okay, Mr. Cordaro?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out that with respect to Ms. Waterfield's comment, the City of Santa Barbara, I believe it is, starts their meeting at 2:00 PM. So, so this is not an absolute thing, that all council meetings are run in the evening time. I would not be in favor of starting at 3 o'clock because I have other obligations. My exalted ruler would be very upset with me. So, but I think that, I agree with Mr. Boyson, that the 5:30 would be a good trial. And who knows, maybe in the end of this, we will consider going a little bit earlier. But I'd be in favor of voting with Mr. Boyson's idea.
Dr. Moats?
5:30 is fine with me.
How about a 5 o'clock?
No. 5:30, 5:30.
About what?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock?
Well, I think there are, there are actually people that work for a living, and I know that a lot of times I'll have a 3:30 staff meeting that goes till, you know, 4:30, quarter, 5, 5 o'clock, I think could be problematic. And, you know, even thinking forward as we try and get younger people onto the City Council, you know, some people do have actual jobs that require them to-
Can we mix and match, have one first meeting of the month and the third meeting different?
That would be confusing to the public. And, and I think right now you have a City Council that has the flexibility of making a 5:30 start time. It could be difficult if you had a 5 o'clock start time, let alone for those people that want to get to the council meeting, and they work until 5 o'clock. So-
I, I think 5:30 is a, is a good compromise. And like Dr. Moats and Mr. Cordaro have said, you know, maybe, maybe after six months, we will find-
Reassess it.
Geez, 5 o'clock might work.
Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We have three requests to speak and no written communications.
Okay, thank you. Janet, is that Cruz? Okay. Followed by Ernest Armenta, followed by Cynthia Godino.
Good evening, everyone, councilmembers and Mayor Patino. I am here to speak on item number eight. I wasn't going to speak on it until I, you know, until I saw about, until I heard about the, the report, and it did concern me a little. As a student and as a community member, I feel that 6:30 is fine. I would say 7:00, because we all have busy lives and we want to come to the meetings. But I also understand that, you know, we want to get out of here early, because, you know, we want to get, go home, eat dinner, be with our families. So I think 6:30 is perfect. In regards to 3:00 PM, which was just, you know, suggestion thrown out, that I definitely would not agree with that. We all have, you know, busy lives. Some of us are stu- Some of us are students, we have school, we have practices, our parents are working, you know, the community members are busy at that time. And I actually didn't, I didn't know we were going to talk about, or that you guys were going to talk about 5:30. It wasn't on the agenda since 6:00 PM. And I wouldn't recommend 6:00, I wouldn't recommend 5:30 nor 6:00. I think starting at 6:30 is perfect. You know, it's all, it's hard on us to come to these meetings and to hear, you know, that sometimes our voices are not being heard. So I would really appreciate if you could, you know, stay at 6:30 so we could make it to the meetings and you could get more community input like that, especially from our farm workers. And yeah, that would be all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Ernest Armenda, followed by Cynthia Godino.
Ernest Armenda, City, I think it takes much more than just a half hour to get public participation. I've been here many times with Mrs. Me, and only once in this office, in here for years and years was only me and Mrs. Stewart. Only once here for years and years and years. You guys believe that a half hour, 6:30 is where it's at. I work, I got a job. My employer sets a time, and that's part of the package. I feel for you folks that want to go home with your families, sure, but you've worked for the city. We pay you as the best that we can, as much as we can afford. And if that means you have to stay here till 9, 10 o'clock, then that's it. You work for the city. If you're not pleased with your employer, you're not pleased with the time, and it's in conflict with their family and other obligations you got, then maybe you should go hire, go work someplace else. Yeah, I hate no bones about it. It sounds rough and it sounds rude, but hey, Mr. Boyson, you need, you need much more than half hour to get more public participation. If I'm holding you up, if all of us are holding you up from other obligations, then hey, all you got to do is just turn in your paper and say, hey, I don't want to be on the council no more. If it's interfering with you, Ms. Waterfield, I forgot your name.
That's okay.
Hey, or Mr. Cordero.
Yeah.
Or Ms. Patino, if it's interfering and you've got too many obligations, hey, just say, you know what, I can't handle it. I can't take it. I don't want to be here, for real. I really don't. You probably don't even want me here too. Just joking. But I don't want to be here, but I have to come here, just like Mrs. Stewart has to come here. We're forced to participate so we can hear what our city's doing. So I say 6:30 is just fine, but you change it any way you want, but you need much more than a half hour, Ms. Patino, to get public participation. It's bad. Just imagine this, we got probably 50,000 to 60,000 eligible voters here in the city of Santa Maria. We only got maybe 45, 25,000 to 30,000 registered voters. Even on the best day with all the gods on our side and all the stars aligned, we can't even, not us, you folks, all five of you together, can't even get 15,000 people to vote. Hey, that's pretty bad. So you make it anytime you want, but staff, hey, I feel for you. Hey, but we pay you what we can afford you, and guess what? If that means you're going to stay here till 9 o'clock at night, so be it. And if you're not happy, hey, you can, maybe the county will hire you. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Godino.
How can I go, how can I add to that? I respect everything you do. I've seen you every single, I mean, all the videos are archived. I go through every meeting, everything you have to go through, everything you hear, also the staff. I mean, I can't imagine what Mr. Rick Hayden does. I mean, honestly, that's just amazing, what he does. He has to make sure that the city doesn't, doesn't go crazy with, you know, finances and people doing their job. And I mean, it's amazing what he does. But at the same time, right now, we're trying to get the community to participate. I mean, I'm out there every single time playing soccer, talking to the community, talking to our community, and I tell them about these meetings, and honestly, they feel a little bit, you know, they feel like they're not welcome sometimes, either because there's no translator, or if there is a translator, they really don't translate correctly, or their emotion is not being translated correctly. We're trying to get them to come. That's what we're going to, that's what One Community Action Coalition and other organizations out there, we're going to try to get them to come. But if you guys change the time, we're barely getting them to understand that it's at 6:30. So I do understand that you guys are going to make your own decision, you guys are going to decide whatever, you guys are going to decide exactly what you guys do with salaries. But I'm hoping that you guys don't change it. You guys decided to hold a position to serve the city of Santa Maria, the community. Not everybody gets off of work at 5:00. There's some other ones that are in the field until 7:00 right now because the sun is still not down yet. So they're out there until 8:00 sometimes in the fields. They come home, they have to feed their families, they have to relax, they have to take a shower after 10 hours of labor out there in the agriculture field. For us to actually ask them to participate in a city council meeting, they first need to understand what this is actually, what is it about? And that's what we're trying to do. But I really hope that you guys don't change the time. And if you do decide to do so, then be it, but we're going to actually make that, not make them come, but make them understand that it's very important, their presence is very important, their voice is very important, and they have to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion from the council?
I think it, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think it was missed that there are a number of things that we're trying to address on both sides of the fence. One is to get some younger people here from school, not interfere with their education. That wasn't mentioned by any of the three speakers. The other is to give the news media an opportunity to get their work done a little bit quicker and get the stories out so that informs the public in totality of the ongoings of the meeting. So there are other factors that we're trying to work with. It's not, it's, trust me, it's not an effort to keep any particular demographic from coming to the meeting. We're trying to try it out for a while to see whether we can get more people, whether we can afford the opportunity to the news people. Maybe we'll get more news coverage if we can do this so that they can get their work done. So there is no effort here by any of the five of us, I'm absolutely certain, that we're trying to cut people out of the meeting. That is not happening. We're looking for an option to enhance the attendance at this important function of our local government. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, what if I made a suggestion that we, if we did move to 5:30 and we had a public comment on consent agenda items at the beginning of the meeting or at the presentation of the consent agenda items? Normally, we take public comment, or we take comment on consent agenda items during public comment. So if we gave the public an opportunity to speak on consent agenda items, just like they do on regular agenda items, and then we also had a public comment at the end of the session on anything that is within the purview of the city council, not on the regular agenda, perhaps to accommodate those individuals that cannot, can't be here at the same time.
That's not a problem. Yeah, that isn't really a problem. You know, I know another segment of our population, and they've said to me, is our seniors, they don't like to, they can't drive in the dark.
Right.
They'll drive during the daylight, but they can't see well to drive in the dark at night. So and a lot of them have said to me, I would be here if your meeting didn't last so late.
I think my hands are going to get slapped by our city attorney here.
Oh, Mr. Treheo.
I'd just like to make a clarification. So pursuant to the Brown Act, we are required to hold public comment before or during any action item on the agenda. So we would comply with the Brown Act by having a public comment period at the beginning of the agenda. There is no prohibition to having a second public comment period at the end of the agenda, although it would be in compliance with the Brown Act for the intent because comments would be received after council has taken action. There is still no problem with having that at the end of the agenda.
And there's many times that people come here because they want us to know of an issue, which has, it's not on our agenda, it's probably not even on our radar, and so they want us to know that there is an issue maybe in their neighborhood or something that they want us to address, and so that would certainly be appropriate. Yes.
So I guess the motion would be to adopt Ordinance Number 2017-12, amending it to be a regular meeting starting at 5:30 PM with public comment at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end of the meeting, and try it for a six-month period, and we can reassess. Does that, is that satisfactory, Mr. Treheo?
Yes.
I'll second that, Mr. Boyson.
Okay, there's a motion to introduce, and it would be the Ordinance 2017-12 with that amendment to the agenda.
As amended, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any comments from Mr. Treheo on that? That's fine. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. So then to clarify, the first city council meeting will take effect with this ordinance on September 5th, 30 days following the adoption of the ordinance at the August 1st council meeting. That's correct?
Yes, the second reading of this ordinance will come forward, your meeting on...
August 1st.
August 1st will not go into effect until 30 days thereafter, so it would be the first council meeting in September, I believe is the 5th, yes. And just to clarify, having a public comment session at the end of the meeting would mean those members of the public that weren't able to attend and make any comments on items not otherwise on the agenda would still have an opportunity to participate in the council meeting at the end of the council meeting under public comment session. I just wanted, just to clarify that.
Okay. So the next item will be a report by your city manager. Mr. Hayden.
That's a good comment. The next city council meeting would be August the 1st. We have a number of consent agenda items, we have a number of the second readings that we did. The first readings we passed on the ordinances tonight, we'll do the second readings on August the 1st. We also have the 2017-18 CDPG Action Plan. That's our last opportunity to get that before the city council, so we're going forward on August the 1st on that one. You'll notice on tonight's city council meeting, we continue that to August the 1st. Award of bid for the 2017 Slurry Seal. We will be having one presentation that evening, and it'll be on C3H, which is the Central Coast Coalition for Homelessness. And then we will also have a couple of public hearings, one to be for the shopping cart ordinance and the other one for permit processes in the parks. You'll recall, last month, we took an item to the city council regarding requiring permits to be for vendors in city parks. Recreation of Parks Department has taken a look at that. They've taken it to the Recreation of Parks Commission. They've come out with some reductions in the fees that will be coming forward for council's consideration on August the 1st. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now we'll have reports from, oral reports from city council members. Mr. Cordero, will we start with you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the 21st, I attended a farewell luncheon at the Santa Maria Inn for Chief Ralph Martin. It was very well-attended and entertaining. On the 16th, I attended a luncheon at 2036 South Broadway for, geez, I forgot to write in here what it was for, and it's too long ago, it's the 16th. Then on the 19th, or excuse me, the, yeah, the 19th, I attended the mayor's task force meeting, and I'd like to comment on that just a little bit, that the, geez, I'm all messed up here. Excuse me, Mayor. On the 22nd, I attended the CAC Planning Commission meeting, also at the Santa Maria Inn. On the 28th, I was at Bob O'Rourke's dedication of the Bob O'Rourke Park. On July the 5th, I was at a CAC meeting in Buellton, and I don't know whether I shared this with you, but Fran Forman is leaving us. She is going to move closer to her family in San Diego. On the 11th, I attended the pre-fair reception down at the fairgrounds, and that's all the reportable things that I have, except to say that I'm really pleased to see some of the younger people in our community attending the meeting and having input as to how their city is being run. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Moats?
On June 21st, I went to Chief Martin's retirement. I thought the speeches were great.
It's the entertainment part.
Yes. Everybody was so witty, a lot of laughter, and congratulations on your speech, because you were the chief, head of ceremonies there. On Tuesday, June 27th, I also attended the mayor's task force, and that's the entirety of what I did.
Thank you, Dr. Moats. Ms. Waterfield.
Okay. I, as well as my previous council members, did attend Chief Martin's farewell luncheon. On June 22nd, I met with Carlos, and I don't know his last name, but he's our interpreter for the city of Santa Maria, and he was interested in doing more, getting more involved with the city of Santa Maria. On Friday, the 23rd, I attended Doug Scherer's retirement dinner. After that, I went over to Downtown Friday Nights where we honored the Santa Maria Baseball CIF team, a lot of nice young men out there that did great with their baseball accomplishments. On the 27th of January, I attended the mayor's task force at the Veterans Community Center. I'm sorry, June 27th. June 28th, I attended Bob O'Rourke's dedication ceremony of his new park. On June the 11th, I attended the Santa Maria Fair Park Pre-Fair Awards Dinner, and I also attended the following day, on July the 12th, the Santa Maria State of the City Presentation. And on July 14th, I did a small presentation to the one-way polo team, acknowledged them for their Junior Olympics, and these were such fine young men, the ages of 10, 11, and 12 years old. They were one out of 72 teams that are going down to LA that will compete for the Junior Olympics, and these young men were just absolutely awesome. To have that dedication, that worth ethic, and that perseverance is awesome to see that in young children. And my comment to them was, keep the same mind frame because sky's the limit. It was just amazing to see that, and that was it.
Okay. On June 20... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't... Yeah, I'm sorry.
What happened to you? How you know this?
You know, it's that, it's that traffic.
How you know this?
It's that traffic.
It's that time we got in there.
It's that traffic I was beating today to get back home.
I learned that from Chief Hans.
I'm sorry.
The only, I'll limit mine to my reportable items. I did attend the, as a director, surf board meeting, which is the 501(c)(3) subsidiary of the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. A lot of exciting things, portable housing being created, especially in Santa Maria. The Housing Authority, of course, will be shortly starting their project on Depot Street. I did learn that they were not successful in getting their tax credits in March go around, but they feel that the July, they'll be more successful in July, and they did say that they're going to do it all in one phase rather than phases in two phases.
Oh, wow.
So we'll start seeing those sticks come out of the ground here pretty quick. I've also had several meetings. One, I did represent the city as chairman of the Central Coast Water Authority on June 29th, but have also had several related meetings with CCWA personnel and our own personnel regarding the acquisition of supplemental Table A. And one more thing that has come about is... And one more thing that has come about has been the state's indication that they may be amenable to allowing Central Coast Water Authority to step into the shoes of the County of Santa Barbara as far as relating to the contract for state water to the County of Santa Barbara. That would just take one bureaucratic labor layer out of our way for getting things accomplished when it goes, when it comes to state water. Of course, we take the lion's share of state water within the County of Santa Barbara and are much more dependent on state water than our South County counterparts. So for the City of Santa Maria, this would be a win-win situation. So that's one of the things we're working on, parallel with the reacquisition of the supplemental Table A. And we are continuing to meet with supervisors as well as county staff to bring that about. So that's all I got.
Thank you. How many units are going up there on the depot?
Eighty.
Eighty?
Eighty in total, yeah. There'll be two 40-unit, two 40-unit buildings.
Thank you. June 21st, I attended Chief Ralph Martin's farewell luncheon. And June 22nd, I met with a young woman to discuss youth football. And again, not enough football fields for the youth here in Santa Maria. June 23rd, I attended the mayor's and city manager's meeting in Solvang. That evening, went to Doug Shearer's retirement dinner, then went down to the Downtown Fridays where we welcomed the Santa Maria CIF baseball team recognition at our Downtown Friday here at 7:00. On the 24th, I spoke, did the opening ceremony for Relay for Life. Then went to the League of Women Voters General Membership Meeting. On the 25th, I attended the Concerts in the Park. If you have not attended Concerts in the Park, do so. You really see the entire community coming out, bringing their families, and it's wonderful. On June 26th, Ruth Thornton celebrated her 90th birthday party at Hagerman Sports Complex. And both myself and Supervisor Lavigna were there to celebrate with her. She does not look 90 years old at all, and she still plays baseball. I went to the swearing-in ceremony at the Santa Maria PD for one officer and seven of our trainees. We did the public forum that night of the mayor's task force on youth safety in Spanish at the Veterans Memorial Community Center. June 27th, I was at Pioneer High School, myself and Eddie Galarza, part of the mayor's task force. We were speaking with students there and asking them for their input on what they wanted in Santa Maria and their feelings on safety. That evening, I attended another public forum of mayor's task force in English at the Veterans Memorial. On June 28th, Bob O'Rourke Park dedication ceremony. And then I, later that day, I was the guest speaker at California Win for Agriculture Annual Scholarship Luncheon. June 29th, I met with Mr. Hayden, and we met at the Santa Maria, with the Santa Maria Public Airport District. We have quarterly meetings with them. June 30th, at the Downtown Fridays, a presentation to the Crowd Car Club. They gave us $3,000 for the youth in the City of Santa Maria. Part of that they raised when the West Coast Customs Car Show was here, they did a barbecue, and they gave us another $1,000 for the structure out of the, out of the park where this structure was burnt.
Armstrong Park.
Armstrong Park. The July 7th, I went to Rice Elementary where myself and Eddie Galarza again spoke to 50 5th graders, again, asking them about things they like at school, do they feel safe at school, and how they feel in their neighborhoods, how they feel at their parks. That afternoon, I went to the police department badge pinning, and that evening went through Downtown Friday. July 11th, I attended the Santa Maria Fair Park Pre-Fair Reception. The next day, I went with a friend of mine, and we just sort of cruised around at the fair to see what was going on. And, and then on July 12th, myself and Mr. Hayden did the State of the City presentation for the chamber at 7:30 in the morning, and that was it. Any other, from any council? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1788.41]